And welcome to the December 6th, 2022, meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Councilor Van Hazinga, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberating justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Councilor Boishman.
Present.
Councilor Kucher.
Here.
Councilor Cragan.
Here.
Councilor Cruz. Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Councilor Squallia.
Present.
We have 10 members present.
Thank you very much. Be advised. The public had been advised to contact the city clerk's office regarding any remote comments of no more than two minutes. None were brought to our attention. If anyone in the audience would like to participate in public comment, please approach the center podium. State your name and city of address for, uh, city of residence for the record, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you may speak on any item on the agenda for not more than two minutes.
Jacqueline Wetchy, Pittsburgh resident. I'm speaking on agenda item number 11. I review the petition procedure, and the one thing I disagree with is that the language for a charter change supposedly has to include framing a charter for the city of Pittsburgh. We already have a charter type B. Therefore, we should be able to amend the charter. It is very dangerous to set up a commission that could do anything and everything in the unlikely scenario that a bunch of kooks are elected to the charter commission. They could radically change our city and deprive us of essential rights. This part of the petition procedure should be corrected so that a commission only considers those matters that the voters specify they want it to consider. As members of a legislative body, you are a co-equal branch of government, and you do not have to just accept the interpretation of charter changes put forth by the mayor's political appointee, the city solicitor. Keep in mind that at your last meeting, the solicitor said some of his opinions on ethics have been rejected by the state. He is not infallible. Here he is wrong in that you do not need to form a charter when a charter already exists. That is common sense. City laws must have a rational factual basis. They can't defy common sense. The reason I know they need a rational factual basis is that Attorney Pousa Terry told me so himself back in September 2021 as I sat in his office. Please revise the petition procedure to allow for charter amendments without the framing of a whole new city charter. Thank you.
Any further public comments? All right, we'll move on to our agenda. First, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Councilor Kucher.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, earlier this evening, we had the Appointments Committee, and we dealt with one reappointment to the Council on Aging, term to expire November 1st of 2025, James B. Cragan, and he was voted unanimously.
Move to accept the report of the committee.
Yes, there is, uh, there is a, uh, an issue with the, um, the committee meeting versus what we took up under the public meetings in the Appointments Committee.
Gotcha.
And that was, that was addressed with the city clerk.
Okay, thank you. Just to confirm that for the public, the item on the council agenda and the item on the Appointments Committee agenda do not line up precisely, and the Appointments Committee agenda is reflected by what Councilor Kucher just told us. Councilor Van Hazinga?
Uh, just a point of clarification. You, you mentioned that it was voted, was it voted to approve or?
To approve, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. All right, and I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and seconds to approve the report of the Appointments Committee. If there is no objection, it is approved by unanimous consent. We next have the report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Cruz is absent. Do we have another member of the Committee on Records who is willing to stand in? That said, I think we'll just defer the report of the Committee on Records until Councilor Cruz is able to join us, um, if no one objects to that. All right. Communication from His Honor, the Mayor. Reappointment letter for Lynn Butland as a member of the planning board, term to expire December 31st, 2025. That stands referred to appointments. And then a report of the Finance Committee. Councilor Deenatali.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on November 30th and took up the following. 270-22 was in order for $100,000 budgetary transfer from other municipal purposes, capital expenses, to the Cemetery Capital Expense Mausoleum Repair Fund for the purpose of hiring a qualified practitioner to provide plans, specifications, cost estimates, renderings, and other items necessary for the restoration, refurbishment of the mausoleum at Forest Hill Cemetery. That was adopted. 271-22 was in order for $140,000 to be appropriated to pay the costs of the city's compliance with the proposed lead and copper rule revisions as mandated by Mass DEP. And that was approved unanimously. 272-22, 273-22, and 274-22 were all orders and one resolution to appropriate funds for the purchase of the conservation restriction on parcels of land in Ashfordham known as the Kurlinger property, about 49 acres. This is to, to preserve the watershed and, and, and put a conservation restriction on that land. $140,000 was granted to us from the state for the purchase of this land in addition to $100,000 already in the Water Enterprise Fund budget, which was transferred for this purpose. And then the resolution is again to, um, take ownership of that land. So the committee voted unanimously for all three. And lastly, 275-22 was a resolution pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 32, Section 103J. City Council hereby approves the increase in the maximum base amount of which the cost of living adjustment is calculated from $12,000 to $14,000 as accepted by the Pittsburgh Contributory Retirement Board. During a meeting held on October 25th, 2022, we were presented with the 2022 actuarial table for the pension fund, and this change that the committee adopted unanimously would result in a net increase annually when a COLA adjustment is granted of $60 per person from $360 off of the $12,000 base to $420 off the $14,000 base. Motion to approve?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Councilor Boishman?
I'm going to accept everything, but I just want to say one thing on the cemetery. 270-22, the cemetery. When given $100,000, I think, once we start looking at that mausoleum, I think you also start, we should think about making a part of it where you can cremate the bodies inside, you burn them, and save money on that part, just the buildings, because we need the money down the road. You, you heard the commissioner tell you that it's going to cost approximately $3 million, and it's also going to cost millions of dollars to go across the street.
So, Counselor, are you suggesting that we dedicate a portion of it for housing cremains? Or are you suggesting that we convert a portion of it to a crematorium?
Crematorium, yeah. It can be done. You don't need a lot of room, they said, what I've been reading up on. And it's a money-making deal.
Duly noted for the record. Counselor Green?
I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Deenatali? All set? Okay. I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Appointments Committee.
Finance.
Fine, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Finance Committee. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Next, we have orders, uh, three orders. 277-22, uh, which is a release of easements. I'm sorry, are you looking at something?
Do we have to do a roll call vote on the one order?
Uh, yes, that's the next page.
Okay.
So, a release of easements, uh, approval of expenditure from a Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security grant in the amount of approximately $108,041.90 to purchase body cameras and accompanying hardware. And, and order that, uh, the city council hereby approves the granting of a 5% cost of living adjustment as voted by the Pittsburgh Contributory Retirement Board. All those stand referred to Finance.
Uh, city property and Finance?
I'm sorry?
City property.
City property and Finance?
277.
Oh, uh, thank you. Thank you. Yes, uh, 277-22 should be, uh, city property, I would say rather than Finance unless the Finance Chair has an objection to that.
278-22?
Uh, 277.
It says refer to city property.
Yes, I, I just wanted to confirm that you didn't have an objection to it not going to Finance.
No.
Okay. All right, and then we have a loan order. 271-22 ordered that, uh, $140,000 is appropriated to pay costs of city's compliance with the proposed lead and copper rule revisions. If no one minds, I'm not going to read this whole thing out because it's pursuant to one of the items that the Finance Committee already approved. But we do need a roll call vote for this, uh, if I can have a motion.
Motion to approve, 271-22.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Councilor Kucher.
Yes.
Councilor Cragan.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squallia.
Aye.
That is 10 members in agreeance.
Thank you very much. That passes its first reading unanimously. Next, we have an ordinance in first reading, 190-22, that the vacant property in registration ordinance be added to Chapter 137 as outlined. I know there was some discussion of adding some language during the full council process. There will still be an opportunity to do that before its final reading. So, unless someone has something that, that, that they would like to suggest at the moment.
Motion that it be sent to its first, or to its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass this through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Councilor Kucher.
Yes.
Councilor Cragan.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squallia.
Aye.
10 members, yes.
Thank you very much. We have an ordinance in final reading to amend the Section 169-25 of the city code entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours. Does anyone need me to read out the full text?
Move to send through its final reading enrolled, ordained, and advertised?
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass this through its final reading to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Anyone on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Councilor Kucher.
Yes.
Councilor Cragan.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squallia.
Aye.
10 members in favor.
Thank you. And then we have three further petitions. 280-22, Counselor Schultz to request the paving of a small stretch of sidewalk on Charles Street from the corner of Forest Street. That will be referred to Public Works. Counselor Fleming on behalf of Ronald Varney of 45 Clinton Street to repair the damaged sidewalk in front of his home. That will also be referred to Public Works. And a petition, uh, to request that the City Council of Pittsburgh honor the late Henry F. McKenna of 97 Pleasant Street by naming the intersection of Spring Pleasant Blossom and J Streets as Henry McKenna Square in order to honor a faithful son of Pittsburgh and his contributions to our community through both his decorated valor in key battles of World War II and through his addictions, counseling work, and co-founding of local meetings of Alcoholics Anonymous.
Question on that?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Who is we humbly, and I thought we had a, a ruling that only counselors could bring forth petitions like this?
So, I am actually checking our packet because the requirement is that there's a different process if, uh, non-counselors want to bring it forth. I am checking to make sure that that process has been followed. It does appear, pulls on clothes. Yes, there are at least three signatories, so it is a properly filed citizen petition. We have, it's on three separate pages in the packet, Counselor, beginning with the one that has the blue shading, page 58 in the PDF.
Okay, so per our new rulings, you need a petition, you can submit a petition to the City Council with three signatories? Who, I'm sorry, who are the, who's the?
Uh, we have Sharon McKenna. We have Ellen DiGeronimo. And we have Carol McDonough.
Okay, so just three citizens need to sign a petition?
For an ordinary petition, yes. And actually, we'll get into that a little bit later because we are going to be reviewing the Citizen Petition Guide. But yes, for an ordinary petition, it just requires at least three citizens who are residents and to list their, you know, their name and address, uh,
Okay.
on the petition.
Thank you.
But thank you for checking. This, the agenda says this is going to Legislative Affairs. I think perhaps it's better suited to city property. So if no one has any objection, we will send this through to city property. Announcements, though this will not conclude our full agenda for the evening this time, just to clarify. Ward 1 City Councilor Bernie Schultz is hosting a Ward 1 meeting on Monday, December 12th, at 6:30 here in the Legislative Building. Chief Procurement Officer Mary Delaney and Director of Public Health Steve Curry will make presentations and then answer questions. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, December 15th, from 4 until 5:30 PM in Room 203 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. The Christmas Carol radio play will be held at Highland Baptist Church, 19 Cedar Street in Pittsburgh, Friday, December 9th at 7:30 PM, or Saturday, December 10th at 2:00 and, uh, 2:00 PM and 7:30 PM. Suggested donation is $5 per ticket. Tickets are available through strattene players@gmail.com or at the door. And it is, uh, kids 12 and under are free, and it is wheelchair accessible with ample free parking. And lastly, we are having a Fire Up the Elves toy drive through collaboration between Pittsburgh High and the Fire Department.
Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Uh, sorry, Pittsburgh Public Schools generally and the Fire Department.
Baptist Church?
Sorry?
And the Highland Baptist Church?
Yes. No, there's another Baptist Church involved.
Oh, yeah.
The first Baptist Church. Yes, the first Baptist, but the two organizing organizations are those.
Okay, excellent. And, um, this will be, uh, for children in need in grades K through 12. All items for this toy drive can be dropped off at the Pittsburgh Fire Department between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM through December 11th. That concludes our announcements. We have two items of other business this evening. If no one objects to taking them out of order, we'll do the calendar first since it should be relatively brief, and then we will dive into the petition guide. Madam Clerk?
Hi. Good evening. I just provided you all with the draft of the 2023 meeting schedule. Just, I want you to be able to see that, and if you had any conflicts or any concerns on any given date, just please let me know, and then we can get that advertised and posted online. Yes, Ms. Clerk?
Why are we moving the July and the November dates to Wednesday? It's just historically been Thursday.
Maybe because the License Commission that would move Monday would go, and then you would go. I don't know, but it just fell that way. I can put them on Thursday if that works better.
It doesn't matter.
Thursday does work better. And wouldn't we be bumping Finance off of Wednesday?
Is that, is Finance the first?
If it's, if it's the same weeks that we would normally have council, then no Finance would meet on the alternate weeks. Unless the Chair thinks otherwise.
We, we set our Finance Committee calendar after the council sets their calendar. So there's no conflict.
And also, just to let everyone know, this, we won't actually be voting to make this official tonight. We, we can't actually. We have to wait until after the organizational, or at the organizational meeting in January. This is just so everyone can get a look at it early and make any comments or raise any concerns. And I'm sure, I, I don't want to speak for you or anything, but I'm sure that if anyone thinks of anything when they go home tonight, they can certainly reach out at some point before the end of the year.
Please, yeah. And then on the third, that was part of the dialogue we wanted to have, the organizational meeting, and your first meeting is January 3rd. We're closed on Monday, the, I don't have a calendar. Closed on Monday, the 2nd because of the holiday that falls on Sunday. So I was asking if we could do the organizational meeting Tuesday at 10:00 AM and then have our city council meeting that evening at 7:00 PM. So we would have the two meetings in the same day if that works for council. Because we can't have that first meeting till we have the organizational meeting.
Any strong objections to that?
What time is that?
Counselor Boishman?
That's something new because I remember we used to have the meeting early in the morning, get sworn in, and then after that, and we go back the following week.
Sometimes that does happen. In this case, what it is, is we're supposed to normally have the organizational meeting on the first Monday of the year, but the first Monday of the year is a holiday this year, or an observed holiday anyway, so we can't. So in this case, it's held the following day, but our first council meeting is still the first Tuesday, just as ordinary. The only time that doesn't happen is when the first Monday, well, no, that doesn't even make sense. Yeah, no, there have been years when we've, when we've bumped it back a week, but this is, this does not need to be one of them.
I got no problem. I just thought I asked.
10:00 AM on the 3rd.
Yes.
For our organizational meeting.
Counselor Fleming, I see, has her hand up as well?
You're muted, Counselor.
You're muted.
I think Counselor Green was just ready to ask the same question I was, I wanted to ask. So the organizational meeting will be at 10:00 AM, and then we'll have the city council that evening? Or will they fall back to back in the evening?
Uh, no, 10:00 AM for the organizational meeting, and then council in the evening as usual.
Okay. Okay. Because I've always thought we've taken up the items at the organizational meeting, but that's fine. Either way's fine.
Counselor Squallia?
Question, just why don't we do the organizational meeting right before the city council meeting? Is there a reason we always do it first thing in the morning?
I could be wrong, but I believe that we're actually required to have it at that time. Counselor Deenatali?
We've always had our regular agenda following the organizational. We've never had two separate meetings. We've always had, if we've had items on the agenda that needed to be addressed, we'd have it right after the organizational meeting, or we would then wait until the success, the next meeting. But that rarely has happened. So, I'm just saying, from a historical perspective, we usually would take up the normal council agenda after the organizational. But it, it, because of the way this falls, though, it's a special case, so.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't normally, I wouldn't have any intrinsic problem with that. It's just that a 10:00 AM meeting for organizational purposes is one thing. We don't really need people in attendance for that. Nothing of substance to the citizens.
Right, people aren't going to be able to, yeah.
For our actual agenda. I think it's important that we have it at a time after business hours. So does anyone, this isn't something we need to take a formal vote on or anything, but is there anyone who will be very upset if we do it this way? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, um, now, you all have the Citizens' Guide to Municipal Petitions in your packet. If you have the electronic version, it starts on page 65 of the PDF. This is the guide that the solicitor, the clerk, and I produced in response to some concerns about how exactly citizens can put petitions in front of the city council, what kind of petitions there are. And I just wanted to whip through this, not go page by page or anything, but just go through this briefly to make sure that everyone both knows what it says, thinks it's clear, get any suggestions anyone may have. So, starting from the top, we've got the referendum procedure. Would you like me to just start talking about it? Or would everyone like a minute or two to scan it?
I get a question on the referendum. How many people would you need to get? 12%? 12% of what? Is it 10,000?
12% of the registered voters of the city as of the prior election. The prior state election, I believe. So I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. It's fairly high, though.
It's, it's approximately 25, um, 25,600. So 10% would be 12.
So you need about, yeah, 3,000.
25, 3,000.
I thought it was 2,500 at one time.
Is that definition within the citizens' petition?
Uh, the actual number, no, because that'll fluctuate.
The definition of what the number, you know?
Uh, yes, it says, uh, on the first page of the guide, the number one paragraph, it says, "A referendum petition signed by at least 12% of the registered voters of the city."
Right, but it doesn't say of the registered voters from the last state election.
That's true. That's because I tried, when I was revising this from the opinion letter that the solicitor wrote, I was trying to strip out any of the sort of legalese that you wouldn't need to know at a glance. Anyone who's trying to actually prepare something like an initiative or referendum is going to have to do a little bit of research. There's just no way around it. Because even if we did say as of the last election, you'd still have to inquire with the clerk as to what that number was and so on. So, we certainly could add it in, but I think that would probably add density to the guide without making it.
A little keynote that says the definition, the registered voters from the last, from the previous state election.
I can definitely edit that in easily enough.
Sorry, go right ahead. But just to expand on the President's comment, this is not a binding rule. This is just an advisatory piece of information. So it doesn't have to have every single specific. So, in, in this case, as someone starts it, next call is to the city clerk to figure out what is the number of signatures and things like that. So this is just an informational thing. It doesn't have to have every single clause and requirement for every process. It's merely to, um, illustrate the process to a citizen or a counselor.
Just for further clarification, you know, this is a result of a, a long series of communication with the city clerk and the council president and residents where there wasn't a clear with the City Clerk and the Counsel President and residents where there wasn't a clear, there wasn't anything clear, and there, so having a document that we can rely upon that has clear, correct messaging is helpful for everyone.
Sure, and with something, with something relatively simple, like adding in a footnote of that nature, that can be done, but I do just want to be clear to everyone on the Counsel and everyone watching this at home or in the audience, this is not going to ever be a complete substitute for legal guidance on this, on the matter. This, the state law that allows for this is not simple, and there is no way to make it simple. There are ways to make it a bit clearer, but ultimately, as it says near the end of the guide, which we'll get to, anyone who's actually seeking to pursue one of these more complex petition options is certainly advised to seek professional legal counsel, because there are a lot of pitfalls to it that we as a Counsel do not have the statutory authority to waive or override. Solicitor, Mr. Solicitor, did you have a comment on that?
Just to your point, Mr. President, and I don't know if it's in my letter or if it's in your guidance, and I'm sorry, I don't have the records in front of me, but if anybody wants to go down this path to start with formal legal representation is ideal, because it would be an unfortunate situation to draft a proposed petition, and to think you have it exactly or clear from your perspective as to exactly what you're asking the voters to approve, to go out and collect the 3,000 signatures, and then come to find out that the petition really isn't exactly worded correctly, or there could have been a better way to say it, and now you're stuck with 3,000 signatures on a referendum petition, and you're either going to go out and get them all re-signed.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So to start the process off correctly is, is very critical, and that would start with, with seeking some type of professional assistance in the drafting of, of that petition, because it is going to be an expensive endeavor and time-consuming.
Right, because, and that, that will come up later in the guide, but just to make clear exactly what it is that we're talking about here, it's more applicable, I guess, to initiative than referendum, but when you file an initiative petition to go on the ballot, whatever wording the petition, the signed petition has is the exact wording that must go on the ballot and that must be passed by the Counsel if, or that will be deemed to be passed by the Counsel if it passes on the ballot. So if you draft something up, and it turns out that because you were drafting it off the cuff, and it, it doesn't do exactly what you wanted it to do, that's the law. Unlike a normal legislative process, we can't just go in and say, okay, let's amend this word here and switch this paragraph around. Counselor Green?
So I, I understand that this is a citizens' guide. Is this going to be available at the City Clerk's office, or?
Yes.
Where are people, on our website, where are people going to be able to access this with the big asterisk that says, "This is by no means a substitute for legal, real legal advice"?
So this is...
A big yellow, big cap, you know?
I can definitely add a big yellow banner.
Okay, I just think because I don't want, I don't want anybody, even for ourselves, to look at this and say, oh, yeah, yeah, we know what that's all about, and then ever get approached by a constituent who says, no, but wait, I got this guide, and, you know, my interpretation of the guide is different than, than what I want to happen.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that there, that it's not a substitute for any legal advice. It's just, this is where we are in the process of trying to answer the questions on how do I bring stuff forward properly, and then what's the, what's the relationship and responsibility between the petitioner and the practitioner of who makes these determinations?
Right, and this is very, yeah, this is very much a top-level view of how this works. You, i- if you look at this and follow the steps, you should have a good idea of the path you need to follow to get one of these petitions done, but it's not going to tell you everything that you need to do to be successful, because, number one, that would be a very long guide. Number two, that would constitute the, you know, the provision of legal advice, and that's problematic. So that's definitely true, and I do think there should, we can definitely add a much more prominent disclaimer. As for where it will be available, I am hoping it will wind up on the website, and it will be available at the Clerk's office. I'm also thinking we'll probably have four or five copies at a time on the back table there. The idea is definitely to make this as accessible as possible for anyone who's curious, without actually going to the length of doing a public distribution of any sort. So, right, so we've, yeah, so we've got the referendum issue, and yes, I think we can add a little bit of clarification on the basis of the registered voter number. A referendum is specifically for the voters to disapprove an action that has already been taken by the Counsel, and it has to be something that the Counsel voted in the affirmative. In other words, you can't have a referendum on something the Counsel rejected in order to force us to pass it. You can only have a referendum on something we did pass to overturn that.
You're telling me you can't, if you voted, if we voted on something that, and I as a citizen don't like the way you voted on a petition thing, I can't ask for an override by, by the voters?
No, you, you can if we voted to actually pass a petition or other measure, but if we voted down a petition or other measure, you can't use the referendum process to override that. You could theoretically use the initiative process, but that's different. We're not there yet.
Oh, and I did.
Referendum is different. Referendum is just asking the voters, the City Council did this thing. Should that be allowed to stand or not? And in that case, again, I'm not going to go through line by line here unless people have specific questions, but in that case, assuming it has the requisite number of signatures, then we, the Counsel, have 20 days from the time that the City Clerk tells us that the correct number of signatures have been filed to rescind the measure, or part. I should note, you can have a referendum on part of something that we pass, as long as it's a cohesive part. Like, you can't just go in and edit what we did. You could say, if we passed, you know, a multi-part ordinance, you could say, I want a referendum on Section 52B of, of the ordinance. So we then have 20 days to revoke whatever it is we passed. We don't have to, but we have 20 days to do it, and if we don't, then it goes on the ballot. It can, it would normally be at the next regular city election. We could call a special election for it. I can't anticipate ever doing that, but it is an option we have as a Counsel, and the City Solicitor would prepare a ballot summary of what the question is asking about. It is important to note, if this ever comes up, that a yes vote is in favor of what the Counsel actually did. A no vote is in favor of overturning what the Counsel did. So you're not actually voting for or against the referendum. You're voting for or against the thing the Counsel did that the referendum is against, which is a little convoluted, but that's the way the state does it. And then if a majority of votes are in favor of the measure that we passed, then that's the law. If there isn't a majority in favor of the measure, then it's canceled. That's, that's basically all there is to a referendum. The only other thing that I forgot to mention is that once the petition is duly filed, whatever it is that the petition is protesting against is suspended until the voters have a chance to vote on it. So if we pass an ordinance, someone files a referendum against it, that ordinance is not in effect in the time between when they file it and when, so actually, that would be the reason we might call a special election. If it's a particularly important ordinance and someone files a referendum against it, we might want to call a special election to get it into effect faster, but otherwise, it would just go to the next election. Counselor Green?
How often if that, if it's filed in the affirmative and does not get passed? Right, is that how that would work? If it's filed in the affirmative, or?
The referendum is filed against something that we voted in the affirmative, something that we actually passed.
Okay.
But the question that will go on the ballot is something to the effect of, shall the thing passed by the City Council become a law?
Okay, and then if that, so if that, if we, if we don't pass that, where it doesn't ever end up on the ballot, how often then can the pursuant come back and refile that?
There's actually a deadline. I believe it has, I'm checking now.
20 days?
Yes, thank you, 20 days. A referendum can only be filed 20 days subsequent to the Counsel's action.
But it can be filed multiple times?
No, only 20 days after the Counsel's action. So in other words, we pass an ordinance here in Counsel, someone has 20 days to file a referendum against it. After that 20 days, no referendums can be filed, whether one has already or not.
Okay.
So there is, there is no second bite at the apple with a referendum. Counselor Squallia?
Peggy, backing on Counselor Green's question. So it says, if it is, if the, you know, if the majority are not in favor, the referendum will be successful and the measure will become null and void?
Yep.
Can the Counsel take up the same measure within any period of time and just vote it yes again?
That, I would actually have to, I believe it would have the same, it's two years, right?
The same as a no vote?
The same as an actual no vote as opposed to a leave to withdraw.
I'm not sure.
But, yeah, my...
My initial thought was, yes, that Counsel could, someone could, some, some Counselor could introduce that, do that legislation back in there, but I, 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 I don't know the answer to the question while I'm sitting here.
Yeah, it, it would be something that would have to be researched, but my gut is that it would have the same effect as if the Counsel had rejected it, just like an initiative has the same effect as if the Counsel had passed it. So it would be the equivalent of an actual rejection by the Counsel, which is fairly rare in our actual practice. We usually just give leave to withdraw, but under the circumstance where we did actually reject a measure, yeah, there would be a time limit before we could pass it again. So that's my gut, but it would definitely be something that would need to be researched if that ever came up. Counselor Van Hazen?
Just have a, a quick question. So a referendum petition can be used to overturn an item approved by the City Council?
Yes.
Can a referendum petition be used to act on a denial base, or a failure to adopt by City Council, only something adopted?
Only something adopted. In fact, that's, that's pretty clear in the, in the statute and case law. You can't use a referendum to revive a petition that the Counsel shot down. Again, you could probably use initiative to do that, but you can't use the referendum process for that.
Okay.
So if we say no, there can't be a referendum on our no. There can only be a referendum on a yes from us.
Okay.
And of course, I, I just want to be clear, this is not like the one and only opportunity anyone has to ask any questions about this. This is just the one and only time, unless someone wants it, that we will be sort of formally discussing this all as a group. If anyone thinks of questions later, feel free to reach out to myself, to the Solicitor. We'd be happy to chat about it. I know a lot of, a lot of time went into this, so it's not the kind of thing that anyone would be expected to 100% internalize at a first reading, even though the goal is to make it as simple as possible for the residents. It's still not the kind of thing that you can just start from the top, read through, and know it all. You know, it's, it's just not that kind of topic. Counselor Van Hazen?
I just had a comment on just presentation. By far, the vast majority of the petitions that we deal with are initiative petitions. So it may be clearer to a reader to have that to be the first petition presented.
I was actually thinking that as we were going through this.
And actually highlight that this is the most common form of petition so that the reader will know what they're most likely looking to, to do.
Great suggestion. We'd never do a referendum.
Yeah, right. No, I agree. I agree. That is definitely something we can do. In fact, I've also toyed with the idea of putting together sort of a brief flow chart of like how to find what type of petition you're looking for, but that's just an idea right now, because I don't know how long it'll end up taking. But yes, I, I would agree. I think we will, I think it would be a good idea to move initiative to the top. And with that said, great transition. Here we are on initiative. There's essentially three separate ways that an initiative petition can be filed. They're all, they're all really the same, but they have different numerical requirements and different effects depending on the numbers of signatures that come in. If all you're looking to do is put a petition in front of the Counsel for us to just treat it like any other petition, accept it, reject it, do whatever we want with it, then that just takes three signatures. There are some technical requirements. You know, you have to have the address, it has to be, each signature has to be either, either on the same page or on an identical page, so that it's clear, like you can't just use a blank form for some of the signatures, because then how do we know that the person who signed it knew what they were signing? Then the Clerk has up to five days to examine this petition and certify the signatures. For an ordinary three-signature petition, that's probably a formality we don't even need to bother with. It can just go straight on the agenda as long as the addresses are verified, but it's important for the next steps, for the next two categories. And then it would come to the Counsel, along with, again, for a simple three-signature petition, we probably don't need a cert, a, a formal certification from the Clerk saying that it's all valid, because we are always, this is the one thing we are free to waive. We can always take up a petition just in front of us, because any one of us could just be kind of the notional sponsor of that petition if it were, you know, if some, if it were not procedurally exact. So if we have a sign, a petition with three signatures, and the Clerk puts it on the agenda, but doesn't actually send to the Counsel an official document saying certification of signatures or whatever, that's not a big deal for, for the simple petition that just puts it on our agenda. If you want to do more than just put it on our agenda, then it gets more complicated. If you have at least 8% of registered voters, same standard for registered voters, then the Counsel has 20 days to act on it. If the Counsel doesn't pass it, again, without alteration, in this circumstance, we can't amend, if, if there are at least 8% of registered voters signing, if we don't pass it without alteration, then it has to go on the ballot. At that point, we check if it was at least 15%. This, this is a little complicated, but if it was at least 18, if it was at least eight but not 15, then it just goes on the next regular ballot. If it was at least 15%, then it can go on the regular ballot if that is within 90 days. If it's not, then there has to be a special election. If it's not, then there has to be a special election. I would definitely advise any members of the public to be cautious about this simply because, number one, it is very costly to the city to have to run a special election. But also, number two, for an initiative unlike a referendum, you can't win with just a simple majority of whoever votes. There's a threshold. You have to have at least one-third of all registered voters actually voting in favor. Which means that, that's difficult at a regular election, unfortunately. It's sad to say, but it's difficult at a regular election. At a special election, unless it's an issue that is lighting the city on fire, there is no way you're going to get that. So you should consider that if you're planning to file this type of initiative petition, the type that's actually intended to go on the ballot, don't file it more than 90 days from a regularly scheduled election because otherwise you will cause not only a lot of hassle for our very nice city clerk, but you will also almost certainly fail to actually get your initiative passed. It's just a practical concern. That said, of course, whatever is filed according to the law will be handled according to the law. No one is prohibited from filing between elections. It's just a bad idea. So yes, in, in that respect, if the, if there's a majority vote and that majority constitutes at least two-thirds of all registered voters, then whatever was on the initiative petition becomes law just as if we had passed it and the majority had signed it. So it's, it's a, it's quite a powerful tool if you can pull it off. But it's a heavy lift. The council itself can place any measure on the ballot as a binding question just by our own simple majority vote. But it will still have the same passage criteria as a regular initiative. That is, it will have to have a majority and at least one-third voting in favor.
Question on that?
Go right ahead.
I remember many years ago voting on, in a city election and there was a non-binding question. And I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was a non-binding question. It's, but it here, it says here, as a binding question, can we also place non-binding questions on the ballot?
We can. That is near the end of the guide.
Oh, okay.
And we will get there. But yes, certainly, the, the guide could be shuffled around a bit. We'll, uh, be looking into that. But yes, that is a thing. Just a moment, uh, Councilor Van Hazega?
So when we, when members of the city council submit petitions for consideration by the council, are those considered initiative positions?
No, those are just ordinary business of the council. So if one of us submits something without the intention of putting it on the ballot just to, uh, put it in front of us, then that's just an ordinary, you know, ordinary, I don't know if there's even a special classification for it under state law, but it doesn't need to follow these rules. Although it wouldn't necessarily change anything if it was a petition by a councillor to put something on the ballot because we'd still have to vote on it as a council.
So it, it may be helpful to have that be the first stop on the, the guide is talk to your city councillors because they can submit petitions for consideration to the council.
Excellent point.
It feels obvious, but it's something people don't...
But it's not in here anywhere yet.
Yep, yep. No, I mean, honestly, this is, this is why I wanted to discuss this with all of you because the solicitor and the clerk and I were embedded in the details of this issue for such a long time and with so much reading that some of the sort of non-expert perspective on it just got lost in the shuffle. You know, it, it was, after, after you've read these statutes over and over and over again, it becomes difficult to remember what it was like to not have them burned into your brain. So, right, so that is, um, definitely a good point and I think will be added in there. Now, the next section is on charter amendments. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Boshman, you didn't have your hand up.
You say one-third. Are we saying one-third of 25,000? Or are we saying one-third of the, of the population that voted?
Nope, one-third of registered voters. It's a very heavy lift. It's, it is not trivial.
So basically, you're saying that if I was to put a petition in, I would need, for it to pass, I would need 9,000 votes?
I don't, my math isn't great, but if that's a one-third, then yes.
Eight-five-hundred.
Yep.
At a minimum.
That would be the minimum, yep. And it would, it would have to be both at least that much and a majority of actual votes. So if hypothetically, we had 100% turnout and you got your 9,000 votes, but there were, you know, 10,000 on the other side, it would still not pass. Granted, I think we would all be, you know, blowing trumpets and waving flags if we got to 100% turnout. But, um, yeah, you have to have a minimum threshold of one-third for an initiative petition to pass.
Got to make it a part of them.
It's, these statutes were written at a time when there was a lot higher civic participation. And frankly, I hope we can get back there at some point. So, right, so next up we have charter amendments. And there was a comment about this at the top during public comment. I do want to note, it's not just the solicitor who came to this conclusion that we can't use the adopt, the amendment process of 43B, section, uh, 10. This was something that he and I both went over extensively and got outside opinions on as well. It is weird. Just one second.
And, and Mike Ciota from 1991?
Yes, that's true. We have an opinion letter dating from the 90s that addresses this as well, from our then-city solicitor, Mike Ciota. So it is very weird that the thing that we have that we call a charter does not count as an adopted charter for the purposes of this specific legal provision. But that's what the law says. It's what the Massachusetts Constitution says and it's what the statute implementing those constitutional provisions says. Uh, Councilor Schultz?
Before we go on to the charter, you said there were three separate ways? I thought we only covered two separate ways of a...
Oh, so the, the two, it's, I guess it's more like, one and then 2A and 2B, where 2A is if you have 8% but not 15%, then it just goes on the next ballot whenever. And if you have at least 15%, then it's, you kind of put a rush on it. Oh, thank you. No, thank you for clarifying. I should kind of work that in. But yeah, so the upshot is after extensive legal research, we are not, we do have a charter, but we are not eligible to use the charter amendment process under state law because we do not have a charter that was adopted pursuant to chapter 43B. So if we want to revise our charter, there are a couple of ways of doing it. But if we want to do it via a ballot measure, then we need to actually constitute a charter commission. Which I will say, Ms. Wechi was quite correct. If we did constitute a charter commission, we would not have the capacity to limit the subjects that they take up. It would, it would be essentially our equivalent of a constitutional convention. We couldn't say we're going to have a charter commission to consider whether to change this line in section 20B of our charter or something. It would be a charter commission to draft a charter for the city of Fitchburg, which could be identical to our existing charter but for a line or two or could be something completely different. It would eventually have to be approved by the voters. It's not like the charter commission could just implement it on their own say-so. But if we go that route, we cannot demand that they only consider certain issues. Uh, Councilor Green?
So with that being said, and I'm, I'm reading this even, uh, number seven here where it talks about if, if you want to make any changes to the charter, that first of all, we would have to elect nine members of our community as the commission and then 10 months, you would have to, you would have to initiate that 10 months before an election.
Yes.
So we... So there would be no chance of making charter changes until...
Approximately two years.
Right, 2025? If we, so we're having an election, so they've missed this year
Yep.
for the 10 months, okay? And that would be if there were, if we decided that there were nine people of the community who wanted to serve on the charter commission, would come forward, vote them in, vet them, all that, and then have to wait until 10 months?
On next year's ballot.
Right.
In which the voters would elect them. We don't elect them.
Okay.
So if we, or if an initiative petition were to call for the creation of a charter commission and we got the requisite number of signatures, because even if we do it, we still need the signatures to go through this route. So if there was a petition with the requisite number of signatures, say in January, then on the next ballot, which would be next November, the voters would both vote on a ballot question as to whether we should have a commission and also on a slate of nine commissioners. So in other words, we'd have to have candidates lined up ahead of time. Then if they vote in favor of that and elect their nine commissioners, then the commission would have basically until the following election to submit, uh, a charter proposal to us. We then are obligated, it's not actually an option, so I don't know why they have us vote on it, but we are then obligated to pass an order publishing it to the citizens of the city to be placed on the ballot at the following election, which at that point, actually, if you count out the months, it would probably be the 2026 election.
Right, right.
Because it has to be at least two months after the charter commission submits their proposal to us. So then in the 2026 election, the voters would vote on whether to approve the charter. So yes, it is a very lengthy and complex process, even if we assume that the commission sticks to only the one issue that we would prefer that they stick to on any given thing.
Okay, so knowing that this is an arduous process for anybody to take on, how do we go about making changes that affect, that are, that are outdated from our previous charter? How do we go about making changes that will essentially affect any of us while we're still alive and able to enjoy those changes?
So there's two, basically two issues there. One is if we were to go through this process once, we would only have to go through it once. After that, we could go through the charter amendment process because then we would have adopted a charter under this provision. So at some point, it's probably something we should consider doing, but not necessarily anytime soon. However, the next section of the guide also addresses the second method of amending our charter. Which is that we would, yeah, it's usually called a home rule petition, which is that either we, the council, or the citizens by initiative, by ballot initiative, make a request to the, to our state legislature to pass a special law amending our charter. That's a lot faster. It's by no means quick, but it's a lot faster than the charter commission method. It would either require a ballot initiative, like has already been discussed, all the same terms, including the very high vote threshold, or it would require a vote by the council and the assent of the mayor. And the reason I say it that way rather than just saying a vote by the council is because, on my reading at least of the statute, and the solicitor, I believe, agrees, the way the statute is worded, the assent of the mayor is actually required. We couldn't override a mayoral veto on this particular issue.
Home rule petition?
Sorry?
On a home rule petition?
Right. Uh, the way the home rule statute is worded, it actually requires both the council and the mayor. I'm, I'm, it's possible there's case law that says, when it says the council and the mayor, it means to the same standard as an ordinary council action and therefore the mayor can be overridden. But if there is any such case law, I haven't found it. And I don't, I don't believe the solicitor has either, so. So it would appear that it would require both a majority of the council and the mayor to send this to the state. At which point, um, and this is interesting, actually, at which point our state legislatures are not actually required to take this up at all. It's simply that having that approval from the city, either by the citizens or by the council, would give them the power under the, uh, home rule amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution to take up such a special law without it needing to come from the governor. That's, the governor can also propose such things. But if it's proposed by the city through this method, then it doesn't need to come from the governor. So one method that I didn't include in here, but that is theoretically an option, I suppose, is ask the governor to put it to the legislature. But that's frankly not going to happen. I mean, no matter who the governor is, he's not going to put a petition to the legislature to change the charter of a city without any evidence that the city actually wants that. That's just a political reality, so. And it's also important to note that even though it's not a requirement under the law, historically, the legislature has always asked that the city then put that, uh, change on the ballot just as a simple ballot question, you know, ordinary majority of people voting kind of ballot question to confirm that it's what the voters actually want. So I'm unclear, I'd have to look into whether that would come before or after the legislature passes the special act. It could go either way. They could either say, put it on your ballot and then we'll pass it, or they could pass a special law that says, this shall take effect upon approval by a majority of voters at the next municipal election. But it would still ultimately end up going to the voters just with a less arduous process and a much less arduous threshold than doing it the other way. Any, any further questions on that process? All right, and then we get to the question Counselor Squallia was asking about, a non-binding advisory question. It can come from either us or from the citizens. If it comes from us, then we can just do that by our, by our own vote at any time. Actually, that's what Counselor Boshman and I were doing earlier this year, is trying to put a non-binding advisory question on the ballot, which obviously we don't need to rehash that issue, but that, just as an example, that is what that was.
Don't get me going.
That's why we're not going to rehash that issue. We want to keep your blood pressure low. But there's also a method for the citizens to request a non-binding ballot question, which is that we need at least 10 voters' signatures. It's, it's actually a pretty easy, uh, requirement just to bring it to the council. You need 10 signatures to request that the council create such a non-binding petition. However, if we say no, then you would need 10% of registered voters to have signed the petition and then it would go on the ballot against our will. petition, and then it would go on the ballot against our will. Counselor Squallia?
So it says the council can place a non-binding question on the ballot with mayoral approval. And then it says, if a petition is signed by 10 registered voters, the city council may pass the petition to be placed on the ballot. But it doesn't note mayoral, does it still need mayoral approval with 10 signatures?
I believe that if it comes before the council on a citizen petition, then it's like any other council business, which is to say, the mayor would need to sign it or reject it, but if rejected, it would be subject to a two-thirds override.
Two-thirds override by the council.
By the council, yes, just like any other petition that we pass.
Does the 10% of the voters need a mayoral approval also?
Uh, no, no. As far as I was able to tell, and feel free to disagree if you disagree, Mr. Solicitor, any of the citizen-initiated methods of getting something on the ballot do not require mayoral approval or even really mayoral assent.
You know, I, I don't, I don't think I read something specifically on point on that question, so I don't know the answer to that. I don't think that there's anything specifically on point.
So that, yeah, I mean, ultimately, any of these sort of niche issues, and by that I don't mean to denigrate them, I love niche issues, but any of these niche issues would kind, would end up requiring some legal research when and if they came up. But the basic thought is that it doesn't seem like the citizen route would require mayoral approval, because that would end up kind of defeating the purpose of requiring all those signatures and so forth. Counselor Cregan?
Yep, I, just, just for fun, I put in some key words and we found that in Hingham, a very beautiful and wealthy community south of Boston, on their last election, not only did they have the same ballot that we had in terms of the state questions, but they had eight non-binding, non-binding resolution questions that included building a new elementary school, building a new police station, creating, shall the representative of the district be instructed to vote for legislation to create a single payer system of universal health care? And then there was a question eight, non-binding, and it got, it was 9,000-something votes to 1,400, which had to do with, shall the representative from the district be instructed to vote in favor of changes to the applicable House of Representatives rules to make each legislator's vote in that body's legislative committee is publicly available on the legislature's website? So they're going into the granular level over there in Hingham, which is very exciting. It's, it's, I mean, again, there seemed to have like 11,000 people coming out to vote, which is pretty good size for that town, but they, they asked their voters to comment on eight separate questions. I would say that's a very informed electorate, and that's also a very kind of engaged, you know, it's, it's, it's very engaged because, you know, everyone voted two to one, basically, to spend millions on police and new school. So as an interesting sort of comparison, we don't have much in common with Hingham, although I like our coastline a lot. But it's out there, you know, these, the towns in Massachusetts will do this. But again, I think the word "arduous" is very well chosen.
Yes, yes.
I want to just jump on also and just say, oh my goodness, you guys, our clerk, Joanna, Anthony, Vinnie, wow, this is a staggering amount of scholarship. And I had, I'd had my own questions about how would a charter commission work? And, you know, because again, we've got Plan B, we've had 1915, I mean, how does that work? Thank you for this amazing civics lesson. This is remarkable, and I can, I can see our president's delight in, in, you know, bringing this forward. I hope anyone watching...
Delight and chagrin.
Yes. But I hope anyone watching, you know, bear, this bears witness to the engagement that, you know, we're doing on the city side. This is a lot of extra work for you guys.
The two of them.
Okay.
I was the reader.
Okay, but I, thank you.
I was the layman.
Yeah, that, that's an important role in these things. No, speaking for myself, I, I love this stuff.
You can add up words.
I am, I am the uber nerd who loves this stuff, and I love helping people to understand how our city government works, because I would love to have a turnout of, you know, 11,000, 25,000, you know, I'd, I'd love to see it. And I think a lot of people don't because without understanding how their government works, they don't think that they can influence how their government works. So, you know, you can, you can. Counselor Ben Hesinger?
Just for the sake of perspective, I think it's worth noting that the town of Hingham has a town meeting form of government.
Exactly.
So they lack a mayor and city council, so typically in towns, more granular issues are considered directly by the voters in town meeting and other means, whereas in a larger city, it's just not practical, so that's why we have a council and a mayor.
Certainly.
Thank, thank you for that clarification for our viewers. I remember when Lunenburg had a number of improvements for public safety building, new library, and the new primary school, those all went on the ballot at the same time, and that was all citizen-driven. But it was, it was, it was a lot of shoe leather that went into that.
Absolutely.
And I'm just, I'm just looking at New Hampshire, it looks like they had some non-binding resolutions, but there aren't a lot of cities in New Hampshire that would be comparable to us.
Yeah, it's, it is definitely worth noting, there's, the smaller of a community you have, the closer to a sort of Athenian direct democracy you tend to get, whereas the larger you get, the more you have to have representative institutions like ourselves. But, but, yeah, no, it's, it's definitely, there's, there's definitely a lot of space between, you know, let's put a dozen questions on the ballot and just kind of overlooking the utility of ballot questions as we are unfortunately, you know, kind of in the habit of doing, because it's just not something we're experienced with. I, I do hope that in the near future, there will be some issues of concern to the general citizenry submitted on the ballot for non-binding review. And ultimately, you know, it, it still comes back to us if there's, you know, if it turns out there's a narrow margin in favor of something that we think would not be good for the city, you know, we, we do what we need to do and face the voters at the following election. That's, that's how it works. Anything else on non-binding questions? All right, the last section we have here is just exceptions, which is more just to clarify what this guide isn't covering. There are several things that don't require the same form of citizen initiative to get in front of the council. None of this has to do with anything going on the ballot, this is just stuff coming to us from the citizenry. For instance, the three that are listed here are zoning changes or changes to the zoning ordinance affecting an individual property at least, but it would also apply to general zoning changes because those come to us from the planning board. And the planning board has no such three-signature requirement for petitions, so anyone who wanted to could submit a petition for a zoning change to the planning board, and the planning board could refer it to us positively or negatively. There, there are express statutory exclusions for certain utility infrastructure petitions, like, you know, when Unitil comes to us and says, we want to put some conduit underground or something, that doesn't require the normal petition process. And then, lastly, there are some things, it doesn't come up often, you know, I think all of you can agree, these are not things that come in front of us very frequently, but our Public Safety Committee deals with them fairly frequently. Sometimes the council isn't acting as a legislature. There are some things that we do that are in the nature of a licensing or permitting body. When we issue Class II dealer's licenses, when we, if we were to get a petition for a special permit for an adult use, an adult entertainment facility of some sort, then that doesn't require the normal petition process because it's not a petition in the legislative sense. It's not asking us to exercise our authority as a legislature, it's asking us to exercise our authority as a permit granting authority, which is something different. But again, those are just, those are exceptions, and anyone who's looking to do one of the things that does not get covered under this is almost certainly going to have to do, again, a little bit of research anyway. Again, this is not intended to cover absolutely everything that you could get by hiring an attorney, because that's, that's just not possible or, you know, legally kosher. So, that said, if anyone has, oh, Counselor Green?
I just have a question about the, the notes and the changes or the additions or amendments that we're going to make to this. Will this be available for us to review again at next council, or is it, changes are going to happen and then it's going to be published, or how, what's the process?
So the idea is that because this isn't something that needs to be actually passed by the council or anything, it's going to be kind of a, potentially an evolving document. I'd like to get it published even in its current form, just so that it's available to people as soon as possible, but then as revisions happen, the published version will just be updated to reflect those revisions. So certainly if there is desire to have this on the next council agenda to further review it, we certainly can. But otherwise, if anyone has further suggestions, they can just make them, you know, send them, send them to me, send them to the clerk, send them to Vinnie, and we will try to take them into account, because ultimately, this isn't a binding procedure, this isn't a policy document about what we will or won't do, this is an informational document. So the clearer we can make it, the better, and it can be changed as simply as someone making a suggestion and it getting implemented. There's no need for any formal process or anything. Nothing, the process itself isn't going to change on the basis of any revisions to this document, it's just how the process is explained will change. So by all means, if anyone thinks of any ways that can, that this can be made better that haven't been mentioned tonight, definitely send something along. I would have to ask the solicitor, or you would have to ask the solicitor or whatever, whether this, because this is not something that is ever going to be voted on by the council, whether this is something that would implicate open meeting law? In other words, can you copy the whole council on it when you send proposed revisions? I would think not, but...
I think we'd just stay away, away from that.
Yeah, it's...
Not create the issue and then, you know, if I want to, if you want to receive, my office or the clerk's office wants to be a clearinghouse on comments.
I'm happy to.
I mean, I could certainly, we could certainly add comments to a working document and then, and then put that out in a, in a packet of some form of other business, we could do that for sure.
If anyone has any further comments or questions?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to adjourn. There being no objection, we are adjourned.